Through twenty-third and October twenty-ninth and thirtieth and even at two thirty P M on October thirty-first. Tickets may be purchased online and the link is on the high school's main webpage on the center under announcements. Just a reminder, free senior citizen athletic passes are available for those age sixty and up who reside in the school district. Senior citizens may pick them up at the high school or at the administration building during regular business hours. And there'll be no school November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day. And there'll be no school on November twelfth for Teacher In-Service Day. In addition, there will be no school on November twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth for Thanksgiving. That's what I have, sir.
Lots going on?
Oh, yes.
Doctor Henry, they have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I.
Motion?
Round next motion at second. Mr. Pondrum, second on favor show of hands. Motion carries. Student Leadership Team, Doctor Henry.
Well, Mr. President, first of all, thank you for for taking the time out to recognize these students. Each year, as the board knows and our community may know, we put together a group of students, grade six through twelve, to come in and speak about a host of issues in the school district. For instance, tonight was college and career readiness. Spoke to the Board of Education about opportunities students have there and and ways that we can improve as a district. So there are many students on the team. Now, often, they all can't show up to be recognized. Some of them, as you all may recall, when you're in sixth grade, you have to get a ride home somehow. So sometimes they can't stay, but we had good attendance tonight to to share their thoughts on college and career readiness. I will read through all the names and then I'll go ahead and recognize four of our high school folks who were able to stay this evening. So for our sixth-grade center, we have Ray Gibson, Rachel Heberling, Grace Kruger, and Austin Subitani. For our middle school, we have Rayanna Haggard, Colton Batten, and Gray Landrith, and Destiny Griffin. For our high school, for my folks that are here and students, I'll ask you to... After you come up and get your certificate, if you go over the screen, I know Mr. Ward, he's filling, he's pinch hitting tonight, so he'll be here to take pictures for us. So we have Haley Fort, who wasn't able to be with us this evening. Nathan Austin, Nathan's not with us this evening. Adalie Higdon, not with us this evening. Olivia Seibert, playing volleyball. Fahim Mujahid, not with us. We're getting close. Evander Bradford, I know he's here, I picked on him twice, so. Is Sarah Hilberg still here? No? Sarah left? Okay. Ian Manibuson? All right, and then we have some W C C folks I know who are here. We have Haley Breedlove, Emily Espy, Isabella Nichols, and Eli Prather. So I'm gonna go ahead and have Isabella come up, and then Eli for your certificates. Taking a while to get organized here, but I got you as well. Here you go. Thank you very much. So if we get a round of applause for our student leadership team this year.
Move on to Spotlight on Education, Partridge Elementary, Mrs. Childs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, it is my great honor to recognize the following staff for Partridge Elementary. The classified staff member that we would like to recognize is Mr. Matt Newman, our evening custodian. Matt pays attention to getting things done. He completes his jobs well. He's always cheerful whenever you ask him to do something additional to his other responsibilities. He is friendly to our staff and students, and even though he's there at night, our students all know who Mr. Matt is. In some of the words of our kids, "Mr. Matt, if Mr. Matt didn't clean our room, it would be really messy." And thank you, Mr. Matt, for taking care of our school. And those are some words from our students. Do you want to roll right into the other one? Yeah, okay. Our certificated staff member that Partridge would like to recognize tonight is Mrs. Lisa O'Donnell. Lisa O'Donnell is our cross-categorical special education teacher. She always answers a call whenever a student needs her. She builds relationships with her students, and they really trust her. They are willing to take risks even when the work is hard. Our grown students that she has had in class often come back to see her and let her know how she has impacted them. And when they do, she will pull in any other staff that they have had when they come to see her. She sees us as all one team, and she makes the most of her time that she has with students. She always goes above and beyond. Lisa finds strengths in all kids, and her students say about her, "Miss O believes in me and helps me learn, and Miss O is the queen of all awesomeness." And the collaborative team that we would like to recognize tonight for Partridge is our second-grade team. Partridge Second Grade. The second-grade team consistently uses their data. They will update the students that need to have special interest and special either upper or medium-grade level work. They have shown an increase from twelve percent to eighty-five percent in their math standard, understanding place value and three-digit numbers. They have also shown a sixteen percent increase in their E L A data for fiction story elements and sequence. Their conversations focus on data and what strategies will best help them in order to have their the highest impact on student success. During collaboration time, this team is focused and has in-depth conversations to ensure that assessments and standards align. They are always student-focused.
Somewhere Mary Ann's just freaking out that three pictures aren't being taken. Okay, congratulations. Thayer Elementary Spotlight on Education, Mrs. Justice.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to recognize our collaborative team, and it is Christina Gordon and Teresa Pullman. They'll come this way. The Board of Education Spotlight will be given to Thayer's kindergarten team, which is comprised of Ms. Gordon and Ms. Pullman. These teachers go above and beyond for their students. They spend countless hours preparing lessons to ensure they will be effective and engaging, as well as differentiated to meet all of the students' needs. They are both team players, serving on many committees within the building. Each of them have superb classroom management and organization. The kindergarten students are excited about learning and understand the classroom procedures and expectations. During the first quarter, the teachers have made excellent progress in math, especially on the standard K N S B nine, which is how many in a set. The kindergarten students scored forty-one percent on the pre-test on September eighth. After giving their second Common Formative Assessment, the students scored sixty-eight percent, which this is a year-long standard, so they've made a lot of growth pretty quickly. The strategy they are using is non-linguistic representations using a variety of manipulatives and activities. The students will demonstrate that a number will represent how many in a set. The students use a ten-frame to count to a specific number with their show-and-practice books and Go Math. The book spirals daily to help students master this skill. The students learn about how many in their daily calendar counting, lunch totals, and counting a certain amount of apple jacks during Apple Week, just to name a few of their activities. They are constantly complimenting each other's strengths and embracing each other's styles of teaching. They are always discussing what is best for students and coming up with innovative solutions to the academic obstacles of their learners, and they do have some obstacles this year. The passion they both share for students and learning makes it easy for them to work together towards success as a team. Also, the leader in me language is interwoven in all their lessons so that students can apply this learning in all settings. Tonight, I have the privilege and honor to recognize the kindergarten team to receive the Board of Education Spotlight for Thayer Elementary. Miss One, our climate team facilitator, is going to recognize our certified staff member and our classified member.
Thanks, Mrs. Justice. The Board of Education Spotlight for our certified staff member will be given to Mrs. Bobby McQueen. Bobby is a fifth-grade teacher at Thayer Elementary. She has been teaching in the Waynesville School District for seventeen years and has previously taught in Texas for ten years. During this time, she has taught fifth grade, second grade, and third grade. We are glad to have her back in fifth grade again this year, teaching alongside her longtime partner, Mr. Kimball. One staff member stated, "Mrs. McQueen's passion is for language arts. She shares her love of reading with her students by taking them on adventures through daily read-alouts. She believes that a student's love of reading stems from imaginative literature shared with them through modeled reading." This being said, she is recognized as an excellent teacher of all curricular areas and is always willing to share her strategies with others in the building. One of our students at Thayer says, "She was nice and helped me learn my multiplication facts. She made the directions more clear for us to learn every day in her classroom." One of Mrs. McQueen's previous second graders says, "Mrs. McQueen is nice, confident, and she encouraged me to always do the right thing." We are honored to recognize Mrs. McQueen for the Thayer Board of Education Spotlight. The Board of Education Spotlight for our classified staff member will be given to Mr. Jim Wilkie. Jim has been the head custodian there for the past twenty-nine years. His specialty is in floor care. He takes great pride in buffing the floors daily as needed. He believes that the environment needs to be clean to help foster the learning needs of all our students. Mr. Jim makes a conscious effort to build relationships with students and families. He goes above and beyond to be a vital part of our building's success. You may find Jim checking in on students to see how their day is going, and from time to time, students earn a chance to help work with Mr. Jim. His impressive skill of knowing each one of our students by name is one of his amazing qualities contributed to Thayer Elementary. All students at Thayer can agree that Mr. Jim keeps us healthy, safe, and loved. We are glad to recognize Jim for the Thayer Board of Education Spotlight.
Congratulations. Project Teach Award, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mike Freeman from Seller-Saxon Automobile Dealership, sponsor of the Project Teach Award, will present this quarter's hundred-dollar award to Emma Carman, fourth-grade teacher at Wood Elementary School for her project, Curriculum-Aligned Service Learning Project.
Thank you, Mrs. Bales and Mr. President and all of our board members and staff, administration. We appreciate you and what you do with our district and making a difference in kids' lives. And that's why we're here tonight, to recognize one of our other teachers who have done just that. Miss Emma Carman, if you are here with us this evening, if I can ask you to come forward. Tonight, we're gonna be recognizing her as your first-quarter teacher of the quarter for the for the year. She is a fourth-grade teacher at Wood Elementary, and she had a project that involves our community, not just in the classroom. And she has written, "This year, I would like to implement a service learning and community engagement program into the curriculum for my students. Students will be engaging in our curriculum standards through the lens of community service and civic participation. Doing this helps our students to understand the real-world applications of the standards they are learning within the classroom, as well as grow their social and emotional and leadership skills." So she's creating leaders for our future. Students will complete a quarterly hands-on project where they will utilize the math standards they have learned during the quarter to create this project. The students will then be then be donated to, the project will then be donated to one of the organizations within whom I have partnered with, one of them being Life Care Center in Waynesville, in addition to the Good Samaritan of the Ozarks. Projects would include making blankets, so they'd be using their math in their measurements, multiplication, division. She's creating snack packs which also involves more math, decimal comparisons, adding fractions, multiplications, divisions, and other similar projects, again, a fourth-grade math program. This project will help students understand how the skills they are learning are used in the real world and the broader applications of the curriculum standards. I remember as I was taking Count Three and differential equations in in college saying, "How's this gonna apply in my workplace today?" Well, these students are taking their math and are gonna apply it to helping others, and that's great. In addition, it helps to foster students as leaders as they use this knowledge to create something to benefit others within their community. This project promotes academic learning, social skills, emotional skills, and leadership skills. I'm hoping to use my class as a pilot for this program this year and expand it to the grade level next year. And with the board's approval, I'm sure she can do that. I believe that this program will help to nurture the whole student and provide students with opportunities to practice their academic skills, the seven habits of happy kids, and civic engagement, all while improving the community around them. That's special. I've been in contact with the Life Care Center of Waynesville and Good Samaritan of the Ozarks, and they are excited about the possibility of this partnership, making a difference with our kids today. We have a plaque in her honor as your first-quarter teacher of the quarter, as well as a hundred-dollar stipend that I hope that she can use to help expand her education with the students in this fourth-grade class at Wood Elementary. Ladies and gentlemen, help me recognize Miss Emma Carman as your first-quarter teacher.
Congratulations, and thank you again, Mike. And I hope the the new dealership's gonna continue this. All right, sounds great. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Transportation Employee of the Month for September, October, Doctor Cobb, Carl Wilkie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brianna Garcia will introduce us September and October Transportation Employee of the Month.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to start with September. The September Employee of the Month for Transportation is Shelley Oliver. Shelley, she's been driving a school bus for sixteen years, so if that's not dedication to the job, I don't really know what is. So as we all know, the first day of school is crazy, crazy. So Shelley really stepped it up on that first day of school, and that's really what I think earned her this spot. On the first day, she drove her route, she got all her students home, and then she's coming back to the bus barn. We get a call on the radio, "My bus broke down. I have students who need to get home." Shelley, she called in, she said, "Hey, I can come pick up those students for you guys." She went, picked up those students, delivered them to home. Again, she's on her way back to the bus barn. Another bus calls in, "Hey, my bus broke down. I have kids. They need to get home." Shelley called in and said, "I'll get those kids too." She took those kids home for us as well, which is team player, hundred percent of the way. Before I got my secretary position there, I was her aide, so I can say that she's a great bus driver. She loves her job. She loves the kids. When you ask fellow employees what it's like to work with Shelley Oliver, you hear fun, hilariously funny, and never a dull moment, and I completely agree. So I present our September Employee of the Month, Shelley Oliver. All right, and then for our October Employee of the Month, Mr. Mike Hawkins. He's been driving for the district for three years now. He's a great, great employee, great asset to the team. When I started, first person I met. Mike, he's all-around just great. He shows up to work every day. He has a smile on his face. No matter how hard things are getting, he's always there, always with a smile. There was one day this month where I received on two separate occasions, phone call from two different parents. My kids just love riding on Mr. Mike's bus. That is the highlight of their day, to get on his bus in the morning and ride to school with him, and to get on his bus in the afternoon and ride home with him. And I just think that's amazing, that a bus driver can have that impact on the students. When asked by fellow bus drivers and aides, you know, "What's it like working with Mike?", always upbeat, positive. He's just great at what he does, so that's why I present Mike Hawkins for October Employee of the Month.
Congratulations. The Spirit Award, Dr. Henry.
Now, that is one heck of a Spirit Award, right there. We're a little worried, actually, to give out the Spirit Award tonight, because if you all know Melissa Vernon, she's a little competitive, and we asked her to bring this back, because it's a traveling trophy. And right before the meeting, we weren't sure that it got back, Mrs. Vernon. So we're, yeah, so we were very happy to see that it returned. But no, each year, we give out our Spirit Award for the best homecoming float, and we're very excited this year, and it's just apropos, because it's their evening to be recognized as well. But our Spirit Award winner for this year is Thayer Elementary. Mrs. Justice.
I don't know how me and you didn't win.
There is steam back there. Community Recognition Plaque, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor tonight to recognize the Missouri Department of Conservation. Erin Pondrum will be here tonight representing them in Kiwanis. For over fifteen years, Kiwanis and the Missouri Department of Conservation have put on Kids Fishing Day. This is geared towards our elementary and secondary students who have autism or intellectual disabilities. They spend the day catching fish, to which they provide staff to do so and poles, and then they do an awesome fish fry after they fish all day. It was a wonderful event this year, beautiful weather, it was cooler, they had some great success. It's a wonderful event that we look forward to every year, and so it's my honor to recognize them this evening.
Congratulations to all, and we'll move to discussion item, Parker Fine Arts. Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cale's Construction is ahead of schedule. We are actually looking for the first part of March to be complete. This first picture here is a front of Parker. As you can see, the sidewalk has been torn up, and in the coming months, we'll get the sidewalk put back. The curb and asphalt will be replaced. They are replacing the roof on top, and it is currently about seventy-five percent done, and we're looking for it to be completed by the end of October as well. This next picture, if you're looking from the front entrance, as you're looking in to the right, you'll see is you've got a wall going up for the restrooms on one side, as well as the classrooms going forward. And you kind of see to the left is that's kind of where the open area, where kind of the gym auditorium area is going to be at. On this next picture, you can see we've got the concrete poured. They've got the lifts in there finally now, where they can get the sheetrock tore down off of the roof and advanced that way with, you can see they've already gotten some of the speakers and stuff that were in there last time taken down. So they're getting really close in there to start building some walls up on this stage as well. And these last pictures are kind of what the, where the lift is there is kind of that wall that divides two classrooms between each other, and then the new bathrooms, that is actually the girls' restroom is going there, and it's identical basically on the other side for the boys' restroom. So is there any questions that anybody may have at this time? I will take those.
Comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Library and Media Program Report, Mr. Henson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With our Library and Media Program, our goals and objectives are to provide teachers and students with resource to become 21st-century learners within a safe learning environment, to provide a device, a diverse book collection, to meet the reading interest of all learners, and to provide information literacy learning opportunities for teachers and students to include how to be a good digital citizen. So with our Library and Media Centers, we have ten within the district. We also have ten Library and Media Specialists. East and Freedom each have two. Our high school, our middle school, sixth grade, and postelementary schools have one, and we have no Library and Media Specialists at Early Childhood or WCC. We do have one Library and Media Secretary. She splits her time half between high school and the middle school. I also want to talk about our Library and Media Specialists, the committees that they currently serve on. They're just not active within our school district, but they're active outside as well. You'll see there, MASL. MASL stands for the Missouri Association of School Librarians. We have the president of the South Central Region here within our school district. You'll also see down there, we have the Chair, Mark Twain, Reader Awards, and Show Me Reader. Show Me Reader is for our grades one through three. Mark Twain is for grades four through six. DESI has an exemplary library program. We have an evaluator that serves on that team that goes around to libraries across the state to evaluate those library programs. We have someone that's on the University of Missouri Library Program on their advisory council. Then the AASL is the American Association of School Libraries. That's the national organization. We also have evaluators that serve on that. So we see our School Library and Media Centers as a place of opportunity. It's a place where students can come in and collaborate with one another, like the middle school students are in the bottom left. We see it as a place where students can come and develop a love of reading. And then we also see it as a place where students can come and explore the world around them through both print and electronic resources. So our Library and Media Centers, when I created this presentation probably about three weeks ago, we had circulated around ten thousand books since the first day of school. I would say that's probably well over fifteen, if not twenty thousand at this point in time. Checked out around a thousand eBooks. So when COVID hit, we wanted to find a way to get books in the hands of our students. One way we did that is through eBooks, and we used a program called Sora, or the one on the bottom left, which is Falllet Shelf. So what we'll do is kind of like our hard copy books, we'll buy so many digital copies or eBook copies, and kids can go in and check those out, and if one's not available, they can put a reserve on it, and then they'll get alerted when that book does come available. Now, all of this can be done through their student-issued Chromebooks. So students will always have access, whether they were in the virtual environment, quarantine, or if we were just home. We really enjoy it when we can have guest readers. Of course, with COVID, that kind of, you know, stopped a little bit, but we didn't stop. The very top, we had authors who came in and visited virtually. This author is Sandra Horning. You see her in the top left-hand corner of the Zoom picture there. She is the author of the book, The Giant Hug. You'll see our Library and Media Specialist to the right of her, Miss Lori Crabtree from Wood. Down below, we had, last year, we had our TVA program. In the first-grade class, TVA students from Mrs. Bab's class, they would zoom in with the seated third-grade students, and they did a Reader Theater with them at Freedom. Then over on the right, we have Kelly Brownfield from the USO. Out on post, she brings her therapy dogs in regularly. So since she couldn't bring them in, they would zoom in, and so her therapy dogs would be there as Kelly would read books to the students. Of course, libraries are known for their books, but we like for them also to be known as a place where kids can come in and create and make. So we have our STEM and Makerspace areas as well. Over on the left is our middle school TNN students, which is Tiger News Network. We have some future Tiger TV students here for Mr. Wallace, but they are filming, and they share that out with their students, their peers, throughout the day, the programs that they film. In the middle here, you'll see Balloons Over Broadway was a book that they were studying. It's a nonfiction book about a gentleman who was one of the, made one of the first balloons in the Macy Day Parade. And so what they did there, you'll see on the ground, there are little blue robots. They're called Dot and Dash, and what they would do, they tied a balloon, had a message on their balloons, and each kid has an iPad in their hand, and they're doing block coding, giving it commands as far as which way to move and which direction, and they paraded throughout the school with their little robots. Then on the right, we have another little robot for our primary kids called B-Bots, and they're doing math fluency there on that chart. There are numbers, I don't know if you can really tell, but in front of the kids, they have little flashcards. And once they figure out the answer with their math problem, they had programmed their little B-Bot, and it would move the spaces and go to the correct answer. Then Love of Reading Day. This is something we started probably, I don't know, four or five years ago. It's, and it's actually turned into Love of Reading Week. For this fall, our Love of Reading Week starts November first through fifth. We're doing a One District, One Read on the book, If I Built a School, for the fall. We're still planning our spring, so our buildings across, especially our elementary buildings, will be doing a lot of activities that week around this book. And then last spring, we were able to still have Love of Reading. The middle there, you can see that book, The Day the Crayons Came Home. These two young ladies dressed up as the crayons, that they represent the book. And then on the far right, they ate a twist scientist's book, and they were doing activities around that. So lastly here, this picture was taken pre-COVID. We had found out before COVID hit that MASL, which is the Missouri Association of School Librarians, that our library program, these ladies, were recognized as the Outstanding Library and Media Program of the Year. But because of COVID, they were not able to go receive their award, to be recognized in front of their peers. So this was the picture that they took to put on the program for that day, but I wanted to recognize them. Unfortunately, we have one that's missing, Miss Amber Johnson. She couldn't make it the day that the picture was taken, but I just wanted to make sure the board knew and in our administration that, you know, last year, these ladies were chosen as the Outstanding Library and Media Program in the state of Missouri, so we're proud of them. And lastly, I just want to thank the board, thank administration. You walk in here every month, you see what a great space this is. You can walk in any of our Library and Media Centers and see that it's just a wonderful area. So with your support, we thank you for that, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Beginning of the Year Performance Data, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm going to share the data for our Beginning of the Year Assessments. Data for the district writing prompt, as well as Beginning of the Year STAR assessments, will be reviewed. The district writing prompt is utilized across the grade levels. It will be three times this year. Previously, we've done it four times a year. And we use this to measure student progress and writing standards mastery towards end-of-year goals. The writing prompt presents students with a prompt that they then respond to. Our first prompt this year was centered around diversity. Fifty percent of students were proficient in the area of question, and this was up slightly as compared to last year. And the question piece really is, are they able to read the question and respond appropriately? The second area that was assessed for the first prompt was conventions. This did decrease slightly as compared to last school year. The STAR literacy assessment is utilized to assess the early literacy skills of our kindergarten students. As this is a new group of students who are all new to school, year-to-year comparisons are difficult. These scores will serve as a baseline, and growth will be monitored throughout the year. It should be noted that forty-four percent of students met the Beginning of the Year Benchmark this year as compared to thirty-seven percent at the beginning of last school year. The STAR reading test assesses students in the area of reading, and we assess all students in grades one through ten. We did make some changes this year, so I want to give a little bit of explanation. STAR reading considers on-level to be at the fortieth percentile or higher, which means scoring better than forty percent of students in the norming group. If you notice at the bottom, the STAR reading assessments were last-normed in 2017, so it has been a while. So basically, when they norm, they look at the scores of all the students and kind of reset all of the benchmarks. So I would expect in the next couple of years, they will update those norms. So according to STAR, on-level is at the fortieth percentile. Beginning with this year's reporting cycle, we will report students as meeting the benchmark when they score at the fiftieth percentile or higher, because that is more closely aligned with the level needed to be proficient on state math assessments. To provide a little bit of context, this means if you were to look at last year's October report, if you went back in Board Docs and looked that up, you would have seen that last fall, forty-five to fifty-six percent of students met the benchmark, which is not really what you would see if you're looking at this year's, because last year, we were using that fortieth percentile. So on this report, what you're seeing is what it is if we had used the fiftieth percentile so that we can compare last year to this year. So going forward, we will be reporting at the fiftieth percentile. And for this year, using the new fiftieth percentile benchmark, the grade levels range from twenty-eight percent to fifty-four percent of students meeting the benchmark. And then this slide is just a breakdown for our elementary buildings by grade level of that same information. This slide depicts the scale score. This is also changing this year. In the past, we've used the STAR Enterprise Scale, which started, which really started at zero and went up. STAR Early Literacy was on a completely different scale. They're now on a unified scale so that you can look at where students are on the STAR Early Literacy Test, and it flows right into where you would be on STAR reading. And so back on the slide where we had STAR Early Literacy, the point to be on-level at the beginning of the year would be a six eighty-nine, and you can see first grade builds up then to a seven fifty-one. So if you, again, if you were remembering back to some of the older reports, these numbers look a lot different, and that is just because it's a change in the type of scale that we'll be using. And this slide shows our STAR scale score by building and grade level for elementary. This slide shows the average grade level equivalency at each grade level. We're fairly consistent with last year, with the exception of a couple of grade levels, which dipped slightly. And then this breaks that same information out for our elementary buildings. The STAR math test assesses students in the area of mathematics. All state students in grades one through eight are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from forty-three to sixty-eight percent. And in most of our grade level scores are actually up when compared with last year's Beginning of the Year scores. And as with reading, these have all been adjusted to that fiftieth percentile mark. And these are our scores by elementary building. This slide depicts the average STAR scale score by grade level, and the list to the right shows the scale scored needed to meet the benchmark. And as with reading, we've shifted from that enterprise to unified scale, and our scores were very comparable with where we began the year last year. And this is our breakdown by elementary building. And this is our average grade equivalency, with the exception of first grade. Really, all grade levels were right where they should have been at the beginning of the year. And by building. The data in tonight's report will serve as our baseline data for the year. We'll be focused on student growth as the year progresses. Teachers are closely monitoring our student performance on classroom activities and assessments to identify those areas where we will need to make adjustments or provide additional support. And in addition to our, we have our building level teams. They are also monitoring this, and we are also doing work with this at our district leadership teams to see if there's areas where we need to make adjustments. Are there any questions?
Comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Proposed job descriptions, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading. Three point zero point eight Teacher Leader, four point eight point two Personnel Service Specialist, four point nine point one Executive Secretary Special Services, five point three five Director of Transportation. Administration will request approval at the regular November meeting of the Board of Education.
All right, thank you. Curriculum documents, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached, you will find updated curriculum documents for your review. These will be brought back for approval at our regular November Board of Education meeting. Tonight, we're bringing our Early Childhood Curriculum in the area of English Language Arts, Math, and Social Emotional.
WHSWCC Course additions and updates for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached are recommended changes to the Waynesville High School Course Description Book, which were submitted by Dr. Jason Witt, the Waynesville High School Principal, as well as changes to the Waynesville Career Center Course Description Book submitted by Dr. Tracy Patterson, the Waynesville Career Center Director. These changes will be bought, brought for approval at our regular November Board of Education meeting, and if approved, will be effective with the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year and utilized in the upcoming scheduling process.
Move to action items. Proposed ESIP Plan, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval of both the Certified and Classified two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Early Separation Incentive Plan, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. District HVAC, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval to, to enter negotiation with TMI and Control Co. For controls and maintenance as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Quinn makes a motion, does a second. Pondrum, second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. High School Football Field Resurfaced, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval, uh, proposal from Midwest Synthetic Professionals to resurface the high school football field and track as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Pondrum makes a motion, does a second. Dearing, second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Transportation Storage Facilities Bid Approval, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval for the transportation building and storage facility with Navitool Construction as presented.
Any comments or questions? I have a motion. Pondrum makes a motion, does a second. Dearing, second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Curriculum documents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Attached, you will find updated curriculum documents, which are being presented for approval. Administration requests approval of kindergarten through eighth grade, science and social studies documents as presented.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Round motion. Second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. District Surplus, Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration requests approval to declare excess items and equipment as surplus property as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Pondrum makes a motion, does a second.
Second.
Dearing, saw him first. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO six one zero point zero two one, Section Three Hiring, Firing, and Discipline or Promotion of Employees, and Section thirteen Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
President, I make that motion.
Quinn makes a motion, does a second. Dearing, second, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed.